These fancy little works back there.
Yeah, I like it because it has a lot of markings, but I don't use them.
This is from one great department. This is many people, but business cards.
Business cards, yeah. Business cards, I would.
Kind of buy a business card, I'd give you one for it. Maybe I'd get one from Jerry. I know you're one of the biggest investors. But you know, sometimes you get really cheap. Some people get those cards just so they want my email address, my address, my phone number. You give them a card, you give them all that's written down.
I'm going to do that because I can never remember them.
Me neither. My years are mine.
Yeah, I got a couple of things for Kathy.
Mine was so bad. Phone. Brought it to Briesing today and I said, you know, I can't use the voicemail or whatever. And they look at me, they go, hey, you all, fifty voicemails in there. I could never get into one. So I have one at a time. I set the car at Costco when we were shopping.
You kept the phone, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, you kept the phone. Okay, I thought you actually was getting rid of it.
No, and I wanted a very simple password. I wanted a password like 11. They put in the last four digits and the whole numbers. What do I care if somebody finds my board and one list of my voicemails?
Can you remember those numbers though?
I wrote them on the back of the phone.
Okay, there you go.
And I've got some tricks.
Yeah, we're going to rent the car for like five days. Germany. They said, suggest them not to drive in the Switzerland.
That's just it, you gotta, that's not gonna take your long distance. As long as you don't expand on any of those topics.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Breezy Point Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I will call the meeting to order and ask for approval of the August fifteenth minutes.
I'll move that the minutes be approved.
Do you have a second?
I will second that.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any discussion of?
No.
That motion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion passed. Council liaison report. Councilman Moni is not here tonight, so Patrick will help us with that report.
Since your last meeting, the council met on September third. At that meeting, they did approve a preliminary levy, the amount of $2,42,021, which is a four percent levy increase. The city council did also approve a high north star development agreement, if you recall, we had reported in August, now the minor chamber. And the governor's been signing and approved the development agreement that's been factored in, and she proceeded to check her about $40,000 number in the variety fees. The other thing they talked about, if you didn't happen to see the meeting, Captain Mallard opened the meeting and led the pledge of allegiance, and she also closed the meeting. She kind of did like hammering on her gavel, so we're kind of thinking she's getting the meeting. But after twenty-nine years of being with the city, she's going to be retiring on September twenty-eighth. On the twenty-seventh, from one o'clock to three o'clock, here in City Hall, in this room, we'll be having a retirement party for her.
That was the date?
You'll be noticed in the newspaper next week.
What was the date and the time again?
Twenty-seventh, one to three. And there were other odds and ends, but those are the highlights of the meeting.
Thank you. Any questions, Patrick? No? Okay. I will then move to open forum number one. Would anyone like to speak during open forum number one?
Do we keep our comments about the flood plane till then, or do we bring them up now?
You could hold them until that item and public statements are a part of that process. So you will have an opportunity then.
Okay. Can I, as you, we're very surprised that we're the older people here. And we found out about it by accident. And I don't know whose fault it is, but unless you had a mortgage on your house, you weren't notified. And if I'm that discriminatory or whatever, I just, that, I'd like an answer to that.
Yeah, let's bring that up again during that agenda item. Thank you. Anything else during open forum number one? Okay. Then I will close open forum number one and move to the next agenda item, which is the public hearing to consider amending the flood plane management plan. I will open that public hearing and ask for staff review. Jerry?
Guys, I guess the easiest way to start that would be to read my demo. In August of two thousand and seventeen, the Breezy Point Planning Commission held a hearing to consider flood plane management ordinance. Since the number of two thousand and seventeen, the Breezy Point City Council adopted section one fifty-three point one zero four, which is a flood plane management ordinance. Prior to the adoption, our engineers studied the potential impacts of the proposed ordinance and flood plane map on the existing buildings in the city of Breezy Point. We found that there was only a handful of existing homes that encroached into the flood hazard area. Because of the limited number of impacted buildings, the DNR and FEMA recommended that the flood plane ordinance be adopted as is. Since the adoption, a couple of property owners have inquired about constructing accessory structures in portions of the lots that are within the flood hazard area. The city ordinance is the most restrictive of the flood plane ordinances that we had access to. It does not allow for any new structures in the flood hazard area. Crow Wing County has adopted a flood plane management ordinance in the unincorporated areas within the county, and their ordinance is adopted and was recommended by the DNR and FEMA as a less restrictive ordinance, which allows unlimited structures within the flood hazard areas. If allowed, the new structures must be built to admit limit potential flood-related damage, or to minimize potential flood-related damage. When reviewing the proposed ordinance and map, our engineers did not recognize that there was some vacant lots that might be able to accommodate principal and accessory structures constructed in such a manner as to limit potential flood damage, which means raising them with fill and that type of thing. The majority of these lots that we found are on the south shores of Lake Otso, One and McKey. Based on some conversations with some of the property owners in those areas, staff went out and looked and talked to the DNR and FEMA folks about what can we do to accommodate some of these areas? And their answer to us was that we could amend our ordinance to adopt a less restrictive ordinance, which allows some filling and some structures in some of those flood hazard areas. What is before you this evening is a proposed ordinance that is less restrictive than the one we have today. And I think if you look at that ordinance, the area that really sums it up is section six. Section six allows, again, filling in some areas, accessory structures, and some structures that can be built with certain, taking certain precautions. They even mentioned stilts, and we got that before. I think, I might answer the ladies' concern number one. The federal government and the DNR have been studying the flood plane management in Crow Wing County for, since, actually, since two thousand and five. In two thousand and seventeen, and finally, or sixteen, it finally came forward. And there were a series of hearings that were held within the county and in the city before the city adopted that ordinance. Now, we were required to publish the notice of the hearing, as we did this evening. We were not required to notify each individual property owner. And that's why you didn't get in with quite specifically. I think there's some-
Obviously, people don't read the paper.
Obviously. But we did do that. We have affidavits of publications to show that we did all those things. And actually, the DNR reviewed our affidavits of publications and all that kind of stuff. There was even a summary published in the paper after it was adopted. So step to totally, we've gone through the process. This ordinance, and maybe there's some misunderstandings about flood planes, but actually, flood plane management has been around since forever. I used to counter with flood plane management was in nineteen seventy-seven, southern Minnesota. We had very similar ordinances. Breezy Point, we have basically two lakes that are affected. Actually, the Shaper Lake is also affected by Pelican and Osse One and McKey. And they, they basically mapped the lake, and they use elevations to determine the flood plane. And there's a couple of terms. Flood ray is basically the lake, the water that's out there and that flows. Then there's a flood hazard or a flood fringe, and that is everything from the OHW plus two feet.
What's OHW?
Ordinary High Water Mark. So everything that is done with this thing centers around the OHW and elevations. The elevations of Pelican, the OHW is twelve oh seven point four. So anything that's built now that is part of, off of Pelican, needs to be at least at twelve oh nine, protection for the halls.
What is that, Osse One and McKey?
Osse One and McKey is twelve oh six point one, and the base flood elevation is twelve oh eight point eight. Again, this ordinance is going to be less restrictive. It doesn't take away the fact that there, some of the areas are also considered wetlands. That doesn't take the wetland mitigation process out of the whole picture. It basically says that if there's only floodway involved, we can do this. If there's mitigation, we can probably accommodate some limited building also.
What determines the high water mark?
It's the ordinary high water mark. It is the, what the normal, the highest level that it's been at, normal.
Oh, it gets better?
Actually, it gets determined by-
Higher than it has been now?
It's determined by the DNR, but part of this is, is the staff report now will be an open hearing part where you publicly be allowed to ask questions at that time. So right now, you wanna-
Oh, here's one still. Okay.
I'm just trying to-
On this one expression or mine?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to accommodate your folks, because I know you're concerned about the elevations. And quite frankly, this is not an easy thing to administer. If the city were to choose not to participate in this program, the federal government actually sanctions the city and any federal loans, any federal grants, mortgages, FHA, VA, out. So you're kind of forced into taking a proactive approach and minimizing the potential damage to property. And that's really what the crux of this is.
Jerry, if I could interrupt just one second. When Jerry is finished with his staff report, we'll then move to public statements, and I'll ask you to come up and introduce yourself and give your address and-
We may have forgotten right now.
Pardon me?
We may have forgotten right now.
Well, that's-
Go ahead. It's not like there's a hundred people in there.
No. Well, that's the way the process works, and I will follow the process. So if you don't do that, I'll call you out of order, and we won't recognize you at all. So that's the way it's going to work.
For all intents and purposes, like, you know, my report is done. I think taking questions is very appropriate, and I'll try to answer them as best as I can.
Good. So if you have a statement or a question, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, give your address, and-
Well, who are we asking the questions to, you know, or you call your folks?
Well, it-
Can you hear us?
Yes.
So why do we have to go to the microphone?
Because it's, the meeting's recorded.
It's recorded. Oh, okay.
It's not only audio, but it's visual, so-
Sure.
So that's why we use the microphone, and we ask you to introduce yourself and give your address.
So I, my name is Debbie Joland. My address is up here at Breezy Point, is eighty-nine, eighty-seven Delwood Drive.
Thank you.
One of the questions I have, and actually, this wasn't brought to my attention, and I missed the paper, I guess I don't live here permanently, so I didn't know, but we have bought lots that we've owned since nineteen ninety-four, and with the dream someday of being able to build on them and permanently move up here. And so we came in here, I don't know, about a month ago, I guess with their son-in-law, who wanted to purchase maybe some of those lots. We're told that we were in a flood plain now, and I couldn't even get a building permit. We've outgrown our cabin that we have. I kind of wanted to do even just a garage, maybe with a guest quarters on top, because we have six grandchildren now, and I thought, well, at least it's doable for right now, because I'm still working and I can't live up here permanently yet. So it was kind of a dream of mine, and I've paid taxes on this property since nineteen ninety-four, and I remember we bought it, it was a hardship, you know, to do this. And now I'm finally at the point where I think I can do something. You know, I could almost cry, because I'm thinking, no, my property's worth nothing. I'm paying buildable taxes, high taxes, I'm paying almost four thousand dollars a year for these lots, that, you know, what good are they then? Are they worthless then? Can I never do anything? And even if some of them are wetlands, even if I buy wetlands and fill in, you know, which I'll do, I just want, you know, to be able to do something with this property that I've invested in and kind of had a life dream, and now I feel like I'm kind of shocked.
And that's exactly your, like, and a few others, were one of the reasons that prompted staff to go out and look and see what we could do to try to help the situation. I know we're not going to solve all the evils, or the ills that are there, and, but we do appreciate the fact that you paid for these lots, you have some dreams, and we're not trying to crush the dreams. If we were trying to crush the dreams, we wouldn't even be having this hearing this evening. They would be just, you know, they would be just gone. So we're trying to work within the rules that we have available to us to get to a point where we can accommodate some of this, these things. Now, there are still setbacks, there are still wetland issues, there are still those other things that we have to deal with at the same time, but we may be able to fill a portion of it to get you to build something so that you can make it a better place than you have it today. That's exactly why we're here.
I appreciate that, Jerry, I do.
You know, we heard you, and we heard some other folks, and we thought, you know, we really have to take a look at this. So we're trying to be proactive in it.
So my other question then is how this turns out. Is my taxes going to go down then? Because I'm paying for buildable lots on that lake, and I'm paying some pretty high taxes, and I'm wondering, you know, the tax structure, then why am I paying for something that I guess is useless?
I've been probably going through that question too.
Okay.
This body cannot do anything about property taxes.
Right, it's Crow Wing County?
No, and not even Crow Wing County, but you can go to the assessor, and you can take your plea to the assessor, and they may reduce your value if you have a legitimate argument. And I think the fact that it wouldn't be portioned, wouldn't be buildable, I think become a legitimate argument in that whole process. Be careful what you do, though, because if you make that argument to the county, and there's a local Board of Equalization that meets here in April, or May, that can deal with values also. But if you make that argument to them and say that this is an unbuildable piece of property, and they lower their taxes, they're going to tell you it's going to be unbuildable.
Right.
So know what you-
I know what you're saying with that, too. I understand that. I guess I just wonder, I just wonder, you know, through this process, then, when will we know, you know, if we can do anything? I mean, how long is that going to take?
I think if the planning commission, their role this evening is to consider the ordinance and make a recommendation to the city council.
Okay.
I think the city council is going to get their recommendation and meet on it, which would be the first meeting in October? October third. Then they, if they act favor of the lake and enact the ordinance, then there's a publication of, a summary of the ordinance, and then it's official.
Okay.
So then you can come in and do some things-
And I can come in and talk to you on it.
Exactly. We're gonna, you know, I'm gonna tell you that you're probably gonna need a survey so that we look at those elevations and all those things. But, yeah, we're trying to work with the people out there.
I appreciate that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, that's Steve Jacobson, three twenty-seven eighteen Jacobson Drive. I guess I would just, yeah, I appreciate you guys coming in and meeting up with us. I guess my question was, like, the new high water mark, would it be, so what was our setbacks on most lakes up here, is it seventy-five feet?
I'm sure, I'm sure lake lots is seventy-five feet from the OHW. The OHW is not new. The OHW has been around forever, and I think actually, the OHW is probably, the elevation on Osse is probably the dam.
Okay. Is that, is that going to change our setback?
No.
So the OHW will be the same, okay. All I do is, I just, oh, go ahead.
When they, when we look at a house plan or something on a lake lot like Osse-
Yeah.
We will ask for a survey that shows where that elevation is, the twelve oh seven, the twelve oh six point one.
Yep.
And from that, the setback is back seventy-five feet. It doesn't necessarily mean it's where your property lines are, it's where that elevation is.
Okay. Because, you know, quite a few who get it all the place, so it's pretty close to-
No, there are, and there are some, a lot of folks out on Osse that are closer.
Yeah.
And some of those are dealt with with variances, if you're looking at doing something.
Yeah.
And every variance situation is different. There are no guarantees in variances, but everyone is looked at as, you know, if the request is real or reasonable.
I just remember back in the day when we'd sneak up the, we could go through Pelican, through that canal over there, and we were coming back through, and we had to take our motors off our little nine and a half, otherwise when you went from Pelican to Osse, it dipped down.
Well, the old story is that that channel was built between Pelican and Osse for the Osse to drain into Pelican, but it's just the opposite.
It's just the op, yeah, copy, right? Yeah. Let's see, you mentioned that accident. See what else we got here. The flood plane, like, you mentioned the insurance thing. Is that, what'd you say with the mortgages? That's going to be in-
If you have a mortgage-
Yeah.
And your house is, if the, okay, I'm going to use Osse as an example. The OHW is twelve oh six point one. If your lowest floor elevation in that house that you have on Osse is twelve oh eight or lower-
Okay.
You're going to need flood insurance. But if your lowest floor elevation is higher than the twelve oh eight, you will not need flood insurance to get a mortgage. But you have to prove that with a survey to the mortgage company that you are outside of that.
What are the, is that like, I mean, I really don't know what I'm talking about as far as, is that like a hydrologist line? How do they figure that out? Just the, a good, severe configuration, like, over one?
What they take is, they take the OHW, which is the normal water level, the normal high water mark, and they, plus two.
Got to have a state, they have to use the-
What they really tell you is that if this is the OHW, you have to be at least plus two feet with your lowest floor in order to not get a lot of damage in a case of a huge event.
And the surveyor can determine that with his transit and all that stuff. What if you had somebody wanting to build? You mentioned the stilt thing? Does that make it up high enough, and then you don't need that mortgage?
He would have the lowest floor elevation, and quite frankly, the mortgage company in that case would probably make you still have a mortgage, have flood insurance.
Sure. Because it's thrown down.
Right. The other part of it is if we don't participate, then nobody in town can buy flood insurance either, if they need it.
Right, right. I remember I live in Grand Rapids on the Mississippi, and we're in the flood plain. And the first time FEMA came in and said, hey, listen, we'll insure your place, about six hundred bucks, and the next year was twenty-five hundred.
Wow. It's very expensive.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You think I'd be quiet? No. All right. You were talking, Bart Blix, three twenty-seven eighteen Jacobson Drive, Breezy Point. I want to know why only accessory buildings?
Well, we're not, if, if, if you look at section six, it's not only accessory buildings. If it's allowed by the underlying zoning, which is, you know, under our zoning, and you have a big enough lot, and you could put a house in there too, but you, again, you'd have to raise it and do some of those other things to flood proof it.
So you're saying you're going to allow people to put fill in?
A limited amount, yes.
Okay.
No, I would think that, you know, if you can beat all the setbacks, and you can put the fill in there to meet the federal guidelines, I don't think it's an issue. It's, when you're not going to be able to meet the setbacks, and you don't have enough room for a septic system and those type of things, then you've got some other issues that cloud.
Okay.
And it isn't only floodway.
Another question, so they basically changed where the seventy-five feet ended to where it now ends, because doesn't it start where the flood plain ends?
Actually, it starts at the OHW elevation.
So it'll stay the same?
Yes. There's no difference there.
And my other question is amending. So you guys chose the one five three, one oh four. There's obviously other ones?
We had, we had some choices. This, the one that was enacted was the most restrictive of it, because we did not foresee the problems that we thought.
So you can't pick another one? That's way lackluster?
This is, this is the least restrictive one that we did have.
Okay, all right.
This is as good as you're going to get it.
Okay, because when I was reading through all the notes, I was thinking that this was the worst one.
No.
And then it's like the same numbers were on here. It was very confusing, really.
We're changing, we're throwing out the old and bringing in the new, and using the same numbers in the code.
Okay.
Basically what we're doing, are proposing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one more.
Sure. Yeah, no, it all.
Like, I know you mentioned Septix Wells, we've got the high water mark. Is that gonna, probably won't change then.
You'd have to get a site analysis and all that. Exactly. Your rules for the wells are safe, Minnesota Department of Health rules. We don't have anything to do with those at all.
Yep.
They're going to look at, if you're going to submerge that thing underneath the, you know, lower than the high water, they're going to say, nah, it's not very good for it yet.
Yeah.
And you're, they're going to look at your- And you're, they're going to look at your, your soils and the separation between the groundwater and the, the top of the surface to determine what kind of septic system you're going to need. In most cases, in some of these marginal properties down on Osce, I think you're, you're talking about a mound, a mound system and, and a very expensive system. But I think that's...
It's good for the lake.
That's what it is. And most of the rules here are to protect the lake.
You got, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. We, go, go ahead.
Okay, so is this a normal surveyor that does this, or do you have to have a special surveyor?
Any surveyor can do it.
Okay.
They have to have state certification.
Yes.
That's a surveyor. You can't get, you can't get your brother-in-law to do it.
You wouldn't want me to come up there and shoot an elevation because I don't have the right credentials to do that. But anybody that's licensed surveyor can do it.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners of staff? Roger?
I've asked this before, like, Cross Lake, Nisswa, or all...
The less restrictive...
Which is what you're, is what this is being recommended?
Yes.
Peggy?
I think the only question I have, and I think we addressed this once before, is the whole liability issue. If we go less restrictive and somebody decides to build on that lot, and guess what? The high water changes and a really bad tornado year or whatever, and they get flooded out, the city's not responsible.
No. No, and, and actually, if they build to the, the elevations that are prescribed and, and do the right things, they're going to, their insurance company's going to cover it. But if in fact they don't build to those regulations, then it's going to be unlost, quite frankly.
Larry?
I want to commend you on the, the great job in writing this up. We've just, we've been discussing this for a couple of years, and as recently as last month, so I mean, I thought it was well done. One comment, where somebody had mentioned about, uh, filling in wetlands is a little different story than filling in for a, a high watermark issue. Generally, I think you can't fill in wetlands unless you're going to replace it with other wetlands. So it's, it's, it's a whole different set of rules. Okay, just didn't want you thinking you could fill in wetlands just because you've got a pile of dirt. Okay. Otherwise, thank you, Jerry, for what you did.
Thank you.
Tracy?
No questions?
Questions? I will then move to close the public hearing and move to our next agenda item, which is consideration of, of this amendment by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would entertain a motion if someone would care to make one.
I would move to accept the less restrictive plan submitted this evening by Jerry.
A second.
And would your motion include recommending to the city council there?
I'm sorry, I thought that's what I was doing.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Motion to recommend to the city council to accept it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second discussion?
No.
Peggy?
No, I don't think so.
Nope. Tracy? All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Hopefully that...
I heard it.
Thank you. Thank you.
We hope we answered your questions. Jerry answered your questions.
My question is too late.
Only just felt that we didn't come, then we have no, like, some responsibility for...
She drove up from the cities and so...
I actually, just, just to know my, my world of work, but I left my house at 6:00 AM this morning in Golden Valley, and I go to New York Falls, Minnesota, to the CARE Center. I helped the elderly there and did an event until 1:00. I got in my car, drove back to Golden Valley to pick up my husband, who drove back up here tonight.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, and then I have to work tomorrow morning at, well, I don't have to...
Isn't he going to buy you dinner? Isn't he going to at least buy you dinner?
Yeah, well, we stopped and had a pizza before we got home.
I think, you know, some of the, especially you two, and just talking with you about, about your situation, and it isn't fun for me to say, no, you can't do that.
I understand.
And, but I think it reflects at staff here that we do believe that there are some things that we can help with, because we can't solve all the problems, but maybe we can help with some of them. And I think this is a good example of that.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Jerry, do you have a, a number if we have any other crazy questions to ask, or are you over in the thing?
I...
Join one of you.
Seasoned old.
You guys are so smart.
I am, but it's hard. On your way out, if you want to stop at, at my desk.
Oh, is that your...
I know where it is.
She knows where it is.
I have.
All right. I think I'm good.
And this, we're going to miss Kathy. She was, we were meeting Kathy yesterday, and she printed out a lot of things, and I've known Kathy since before she worked here, worked very closely with Estefan. Just, I've been here for almost seven years, and my family has been here longer. And that's why I was a little...
Thank you, folks, for coming. Have a good, strong cup of coffee.
I commend you for coming in, actually, and as you noticed, nobody else did, even though there were, there was information. It's, you know, it's better when you come in and get your questions answered before you have a problem rather than after.
Yeah. This is a true, just having a one-on-one, a couple of roles.
Are we the only people that ever came to talk to you?
Oh, no.
I'm going, where are they? Because I was looking at Davis's, and it affects their, I'm just going, where are these people? We actually went around the lake after talking to Kathy yesterday and put it on our computer, and, and we were checking everything else.
Good for you.
If you don't have a mortgage, then you're really not affected by it as much, but yet if you're...
But if you want to build.
If you want to build, you are better.
Then you are.
Right.
If you don't have a mortgage, but yet if you want to build. They probably couldn't get off of work because they needed to...
Probably some of it.
Well, I want, we came, we figured this place would be good.
Compared to some of our meetings, it was.
I did start with some people this afternoon about this, this whole deal, too, and they were knowing from Osce, who's in, calls for Pelican also, so, right, some of that got taken care of.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is update on the comprehensive plan, and Tracy is our representative on that group?
Briefly, hopefully. The committee has been established for the comprehensive planning update, and the committee, which you may be interested in, consists of the city council team leader, who is Rebecca Ball, planning and zoning rep is me, public works is Joe Zierden, park and recs is Brian Sismansky, cemetery commission is Kay Spizo, the representative from the public, number one is Roger Okerman, number two is Paul Cullen, number three is Pam Lillyhigh, and number four is David Spizo. And this work is being directed and coordinated by Sourcewell, which is a nonprofit outfit out of Staples Motley, where, where are they from?
Staples.
Yeah. And they have established a schedule, and we, we've met twice, and we're working on the community engagement process, trying to get the community's input. We're developing a citizen's survey, which we've been all commenting on and helping to develop, and we hope to have that submitted to the citizens in the next couple of months, I believe it is. One interesting aspect, though, is that Sourcewell said if they get, as I recall, a 7% response, they consider that good. Wasn't it 7?
That's the number the mayor told me.
Yeah. 7% response. And I thought to myself, why, why do you do this if only 7% are going to respond? But they said mathematically and whatever, they consider that a good response, and they can develop plans based on that response. So, anyway. And then the, the actual revision in the comprehensive plan is supposed to be developed and reported during January through mid-April of this coming year. And that'd be my report.
That was brief. Good. 7%, that isn't very good.
Yeah, I, I just couldn't believe that, but anyway, that's...
Two thousand people, it'd be 140 people.
It's not even scientific.
Well, they, they claim it is. I don't know.
You're going to get a biased number. Only the people who are going to reply are going to probably be biased one direction or another, so it is, it is a scientific...
Well, okay, I, I will give you the guy's name at Sourcewell.
No, I'm working, working with you.
In fact, if you would like to assume my role.
Questions of Tracy?
No, I'm glad you're doing it. You're doing a good job.
I think you're a good job.
I haven't seen the final product yet.
This is a work in progress.
It is a work in progress.
I think first of all, we should aim for higher than 140 people. Now, if we just...
Well, that, that was my thought, I, you know, and that's really not part of my report, other than that, that I was surprised at what they said was, because my point was, as I went through the questionnaire, it's like 23, 24 questions, I personally probably wouldn't necessarily spend the time that it requires to respond to that. I would probably take the attitude of, well, I think everything's pretty good, let's let it go the way it is. That's not what you really want. So...
And also, there are going to be some meetings, right, where the public can come and express their...
There, there will be. We're trying to get to this, this questionnaire, and then that can help us develop, they can help them develop what to do from that point on.
The last time around, the meetings were really, I thought, well done.
Yeah, we, we attended, we attended at least one of them ourselves, and I agree with you.
Do I remember focus groups being mentioned as a part of the process?
Yeah, well, that's part of the, the meetings that are going to happen, as we go forward. Had anything, if I've left out any major features?
The only question I had, Tracy, was the email that I was asked forward, asked that the commissioners or the steering committee members get their responses in by last Thursday because their hope was to get the survey out next week.
Well, I finally looked at my email this morning, and I responded.
I've heard that from several people, and they've all said, oh, okay.
So the survey gets mailed next week, and yeah, every homeowner gets one?
Well, that's what we're also trying to verify, how they want to get it out, or create a list.
We, we, we've talked about contacting, as an example, the Pelican Lake Conservation Club, the Pelican Lakes Association, perhaps up at U of U School, and businesses as well, to try to get all of those groups to help support spreading this questionnaire out and getting input.
And not mailing it, or mailing it all?
No, I, I think you've got to mail. I believe we have to mail it.
To get the, the snowbirds.
Yeah.
And send the stamp address and return envelope with it, otherwise you will not get it back.
That's true.
Larry, do you have any questions?
No, I'm just going to say good work.
Tracy, there, there've been a couple of things over the past few months that we hope would get addressed by this...
Animal husbandry?
Yeah, that'd be one of them.
That, well, and that's, that's in there in the questionnaires, but there, you, you know, you may get no one that thinks that's very important.
Oh, you'll get one or two. I can guarantee it.
Two.
So those issues do get addressed in some form?
Well, I, I've got the questionnaire as it stands right now, if anybody wants to see it. It is 24 questions long and about six or seven pages. I can pass it around, and, or you want to make...
Is that why the response is so low? Because it's so, so many questions?
Well, they said that they, they consider a survey quote like this. Now, maybe that means it is long, but if they get about 7% response, they feel they've succeeded.
Would your question, Roger?
I would like it back, but, oh, the guy, the guy, the guy is Jake Huebch, H-U-E-B-S-C-H.
Of course, those questions aren't compiled by you guys, so you, you don't have no...
No, but they've asked for our comments on them, and we've, we've given them comments at the meeting on the first, uh, the first 13 questions.
Are they multiple choice?
Some are, well, here, look at it. Some of them are, some of them are ranked and...
It's kind of like getting an oil change, and they send you a survey on an oil change, and you go, really? I need to answer these questions for an oil change or a doctor appointment, or, you know? If it's more than five questions, people kind of go, that's what I feel like.
Well, that's what I thought you were asking, Roger, if, if this is too intimidating...
I, one of my comments to them when asked for comments was, like I said, I think general comment is that it's long, extensive, detailed, and one that I probably personally would either, I would either be really seriously interested in it and do a good job, or I'd just kiss it off and say, to heck with it.
No.
And people can choose to do...
Because you pay me the big bucks.
You like to do all the questions.
That's why you got 7%.
Then the, then it's, I, obviously, the mail back is an additional cost, too. Do you have to give everybody an envelope?
Well, I'm not managing the program, this, this, whatever company I sit.
And this may be another, I don't know if they've talked about it, what about putting it online and people could choose to return it in an email rather than...
Yep.
Would seem to me you might get a quicker response, though, or better.
Get everybody's email address.
Well, if they put it on the website, though, the city website, we could choose to go where the answer is there.
Who's going to go on the, you know, who looks at it? Who looks at the city website?
What I believe is the...
Once a year, I do.
The questionnaire will either be mailed out, but there will be a line for them to fill it out online also.
Oh, it will, okay.
We're not included in this subcommittee, so...
Well, you can certainly give us your input.
You'll fill out the survey.
I mean, you have never been quiet in the past.
Any other questions of...
No, I probably said too much.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay.
Thank you for doing this job.
Well, thank you for asking. Yes, thank you for asking.
And, and I mentioned the names of the other people on the committee, and if you know them, you know, I would urge you to visit with them, too. Now, you might, as kind of an aside, you might notice two Spizo names on there. Kay is on, is chairman or chairwoman of the cemetery commission, so she is there by position. Her son, David, is there, and I won't say it was at my urging, but I did urge Bob Spizo to make sure they had a representative from the resort on this committee, because I did not want to hear any complaints from him in the future if he didn't participate.
They participated last time.
Did they?
Those are actually pretty easy questions. I mean, they're, even for a goofball, like, maybe they'll figure them out, so...
We'll move to the next agenda item, which is other, Jerry or Patrick?
Just FYI, there's a copy of a variance application in your package. We revised that somewhat to reflect the new law. I think I called on that in the last two variances that we had, with one of the attorneys called for it, or, or, one of the questions that we've done before, that is, I always say, he asked you to ignore that in your deliberations. We replaced that with a different question that reflects what the new law is. We've also asked them to describe... We've also asked them to describe essentially what practical difficulties we have. Hopefully, this helps us get a better handle.
Is there any way that we can require that it be done not by hand, but by the, you know, typing it, computer or otherwise?
Scribble.
Because really, reading the scribbles that some of the people write is ridiculous.
I have to just say it has to be legibly.
Well, we... Currently, none of our applications that are online, as you can print off, are fill-in-the-blank. I think Kathy and SourceWell, again, as our IT specialists, have been working on that, but it's not been resolved.
One of my biggest frustrations that I have when I get an application, not necessarily a written application like this, but even getting site plans in Breezy Point is the hardest thing in the world. Getting something that's accurate and good is like boinky. We try to get as best as we possibly can, but we're not going to do it for somebody because we don't want to put our words into their application. But we do help them through it, but we really don't want to be the ones that are blamed if they get the application or get approved and staffed in.
Well, I think sometimes some of the ones we've read, we really aren't quite sure what they're saying, because you can't read the hammer.
I think somebody on our panel brought to the attention of somebody who wrote us a scribble thing handed to us, and we were pointing it out that that's not legible and that they wrote with their feet or something like that. They have to write it so we can read it, or we can't consider it.
Yeah, and that's, you know, one of the things is first impression, the application that you get. Your first impression is that, you know, they really didn't take the time or the effort to do anything. I, looking at it, would probably say that's either not valid or you don't have enough feeling to make it good. Why should we look at it as a present proposal? Kind of like any resumes.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Are there any other agenda items that anyone wants to bring up? Tracy?
I'd like to bring up this one, which I have mentioned to a couple of people, and unfortunately, I don't think there's anything we can do about it. But we received a variance request on lots 40, what, let's see?
Fawcett Hill.
Yeah, up on Fawcett Hill, there were two lots who received a variance request. And we reviewed it and we did go ahead and recommend the variance request. I feel like I was misled, and it may not have been appropriate grounds not to approve it, but in the staff recommended recommendation, it says the proposed structures are consistent with other structures in the area. And now that it has been framed in substantially, I don't believe it is all consistent with the structures, other structures in the area. And number two, it is not as depicted in the elevation rendering submitted with the application. It is a totally different exterior, totally different exterior feel. I don't think there are any violations of the specific height and, you know, the outside size, but I don't think it was represented appropriately, and I probably would have tried to find a reason not to approve it if I'd known all that. Now, I don't know if there's anything you can possibly do. I would suggest if anybody has any interest in even looking at this thing or thinking about it anymore, they go look at the building and they should go with... Part of our application was this, quote, "architectural rendering of what it looks like," what it's going to look like. It doesn't look a bit like it. It doesn't have the same pitch. It doesn't have the chimney. It has two little airport windows at the top, and there are no other houses that I could see on that hill that are similar to that. There are a couple other two-story houses, but they look more like this rendering. And again, I guess we aren't the architectural review committee, but...
I do, I do think this is a good example of, maybe we have to go further, and maybe we have to say, is this the house you're going to build? And if it is, this becomes part of the application or part of the approval process? This is the only thing you can build? I think we might learn from the mistake. We didn't specify that that was the house. We just specified setbacks and/or the maximum height. We took the maximum height down from 35 feet to 20, you know, and felt we did a compromise there, whatever it was, and we probably didn't go far. And we probably need to do that in the future in this case. This...
So, I'm confused, Jerry. The one we approved last time on Pelican, they can put anything as that same footprint? Doesn't have to look like that? I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, it really needs to be on the same footprint, and that's all we really approved. We did not approve any architectural...
Yeah, I guess...
...specifications.
So, can't that be made part of the application? That what is shown in any renderings they give us is what they will build? Is that legal? We can do that?
We could do that, or we could do as part of the approval process, if it's approved, that this is the plans and specifications, or the plans become part of the approval?
I guess I'm like Roger. I have all along presumed that if we're getting a rendering as part of the application and we agree to approve that, that it's automatic, that that is, at least it should be close.
Well, there are about, I don't know, eight or 10 items listed in the variance that we required. None of them had really anything to do with acceptance of the rendering of the...
Right, and I understand that. I guess I just thought, just like what they say in the application, I would have presumed that what they say and what they give us as a drawing is what we're going to get. And if that's not true, then we should be rewriting this application. Absolutely.
Tracy's right, the one, it's up on, it's got tiny windows in it and...
You must have gone up and...
I walked by it one day, yeah.
Believe me, it's been the center of controversy.
I can imagine.
The day it's been, even this afternoon, I had some folks in about it, to the point that I've actually gone out there and physically measured it myself.
Just to make sure that we...
To make sure that it met the height restrictions. I think there's some other things going on there that I don't really care to go on with publicly.
You know, what should concern us is that overwhelmingly, what we heard from people that evening was, we're concerned, two big concerns. One is that the roads would be blocked.
Too close to roads.
I'm not sure what's happened there, but the other was, will this be consistent? Will this look consistent with the neighborhood? And what concerns me is we actually rejected a home that we felt wouldn't be consistent in a neighborhood. Not looking at this one clearly, I would have said it's not consistent with the neighborhood.
That's too vague of a term, unfortunately.
That's the lesson to be learned.
What's consistent to somebody is not consistent to others. So, again, if we want to be, we have to be more specific. If we just, it should be similar to the other homes, or it's a home, so it's similar.
And I think you can do that by saying, we need to approve the plans.
Can you add that into whichever applications are going to...
I don't think that's appropriate with all applications, but I think in, you know, in something like this, yeah, would be very appropriate. I think it's, you know, it's something that we'll certainly keep tabs on.
Part of your approval process, when you're approving a variance like that, could say, if you've submitted plans that are included in the packet, we consider that you'll be consistent with what has been submitted, and/or you could require the specific plans at the meeting. I mean, there's a lot of ways to go there, but it's going to be a case by case.
That'd be one of our conditions.
Do we, as, do we have a right to, I mean, we are not an architectural review committee. We're really reviewing rules and regulations on sizes, setbacks, and what have you. I guess my bone was that it swayed me because it looked like it would fit okay. So, you basically found reasons to go ahead and approve it. If I had been swayed the other way, I would, might search for reasons not to.
I think, I think you have the ability to review architectural standards or criteria as part of the variance approval. Now, if it wasn't for the variance, you wouldn't have that approval.
Yeah, and you could do that.
And you wouldn't have any right to say to Larry, he's got to build a two-story, 16,000 square foot house that's in the Tudor style or something like that. You wouldn't have that right. But if Larry was applying for a variance and all those homes around there were two-story Tudor-style houses, you probably have the right to make that a condition of the approval of the variance.
Be specific on it, too.
We did that with that log house. We said a log house just wouldn't fit in this neighborhood that has neighbors with steel siding. I don't think you were on the commission...
I don't recall.
At that time, Tracy, but we actually did reject one based on it would not be consistent with the neighborhood.
Where they put it now, it looks good.
How far along is that house?
It's pretty far along. It's ready for siding. I don't know about the inside, but the outside is ready for siding and, so, I would say it is, the structure is 75% complete. Rouson, I think the Rousson.
I think it is.
I know, I don't know what the shingles are on, but the roof itself is there. And the pitch of the roof is totally different than what's characterized here, which in my mind is the first thing that makes it out of it.
How is it different?
It's more, well, okay. You need to go look at it.
I know, I do, but it's dirt.
It looks like a wrecking thing standing up with a hat on.
Yep. That's exactly what it looks like.
Oh, okay, so it's not...
Instead of, instead of being, you know...
And the interesting thing is that rendering looks just like the neighbors' houses.
Pretty much.
I thought all those houses up there were like 70-year-old shacks.
Well, they are, but they've been fixed up pretty nicely, and there are a lot of them that look cosmetically pretty nice.
There's a few that are...
They are small. That's still where the, one shack had the gambling and one shack had the girls and one shack had the guys from Chicago.
The good old days.
When we were in Big Lake in the heydays before the recession and people were building subdivision homes like crazy, people started complaining about the renderings of the drawings, and they were showing brand-new houses with mature 30-year-old oak trees or 30-year-old pine trees. And the city council said, that's great, you do that again, and we're going to require that you put one on every house, every lot. And they immediately stopped doing that. So, those are things why I know you can make these requirements.
Now, do we need a motion to...
No, I think we can, maybe we can tweak that application to help that situation.
Yep.
All right. And thank you, Tracy, for bringing this up. It's certainly a lesson for all of us. Any other, any other other? If not, I will go to the next agenda item, which is open forum number two, and obviously, I can open and close open forum number two. We have no participants.
We should come up and open forum number two.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll send it.
Motion approved. Leading adjourn.
I thought when that house got approved, too, that when I looked at all those other buildings, I thought the bar was so low, I didn't think you could get under it.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
That was a tough one, Roger.
But now, my curiosity says, yeah, I'm going to have to scoot over there and take a peek.
You don't want to go tonight?
No, it's...
And there were certainly a lot of...
Didn't bring a flashlight.
Well, weren't they supposed to clean up some of that? There's an old trailer still laying there, and there's all kinds of...
That wasn't, that wasn't so much the issue.
I had to fight for that stick, I worry.
No, it's mine.
I didn't bring a stick.
And they were afraid that the roads would be absolutely blown.
I'm working on it. You've got the perfect body, you're well. But actually, I guess it...
He was going to, I feel like that was going to, he was going to...
Anybody else want to sign us? No?
Everything he could to keep everybody happy.
I had to tell that lady that was talking about Kathy, I said, I still haven't accepted her resignation.
Neither have we.
So...
To the neighbor.
Yeah, I'm surprised we haven't got... However, Deb, is it Deb? She seems, she seems, she seems nice and...
I'm going to have to go on that.
She'll be okay.
I mean, every time I've gone...
Well, you guys will get her trained, eh?
She's going to train, huh?
Can you have someone training her in the office? Doing things to irritate his neighbors. That's a pretty close neighbor.
It's one way up here.
To not be getting along with people. So, that's really stupid. Seriously.
Yeah, I really believe...
Do I believe you?
I got my GPS.
The neighbors themselves prompted some of those redesigns.
You think so?
Oh, absolutely. I believe there is so much bad blood going on up there. It is, yeah. It's terrible.
Well, apparently, that guy, we were just saying, doesn't care what his neighbors think.
He doesn't. He doesn't care what you think. He doesn't care what I think. He doesn't care what anybody thinks. Al thinks all Al.
Is this the guy that's building?
Yeah.
I think I heard that before we approved it, too, that he was going to be a son of a gun.
Now, he's got small windows in it, doesn't he?
Oh, yeah. Windows, the whole thing is...
Bottom line, if he makes a crummy-looking house, he ain't going to sell it either.
Wait, I thought he was going to live in it or something.
Oh, he's got that house, he's nothing but...
He's flipping it.
Actually, the best thing that could happen is that a nice...
Family would buy it.
Nice family moves in and...
Simmers everybody down.
Remodos.
They have the potluck. Yeah, the other part of the problem up there is the fact that these neighbors have all been using that piece of property as their own for so many years. And now that's getting taken away from them.
And that's a lot of your irritation.
Yeah.
They didn't come together and buy the lot from them.
Which they could have done.
Which they could have done. I think we took that into consideration. They really wanted to have the green space, which they said they did, then they needed to buy it and make it the green space.
But now they're complaining about parking because they don't have any parking.
Yep, because they parked in his lot.
Yeah. You know, wait, what, I was told that is a Breezy Point city street?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is it adequate for fire trucks to get down there?
They could get through it.
Is the fire going to be out by the time they get there or...
Hopefully not.
Hopefully nobody's...
Fire won't be out, it's just, I hope it doesn't...
I had the distinct feeling that that one gal spoke tonight.
Actually, there was one up there two years ago, or three years ago, Tracy, that it burned down and it never got to.
Really?
Yeah.
Boy, I think you're right, yeah.
The other two-story that's up there was burned.
Oh, the one that's now consistent with the rest?
Yeah. The only one that's nice and new, that's the one that burned.
The one gal, our Blix, I think her name was. I had the distinct...
There is one, yeah. It threw less smoke.
Somehow was missing the fact that if you put a house or an accessory structure, you still have to meet setbacks and, because she made the comment about, well, couldn't you put a house there? Well, yeah, if it's a particularly large size and you're 75 feet back from the lake.
Harry's going to have his hands full.
Oh, I think so. I think so. Well, of course, fine.
See, they go...
Yeah, thanks. I'll call you about that card. I'll send you the email, yeah.
Thank you. So, y'all know, last year? I played a little bit. I got a play, somebody tried it. Where are you playing?
I don't know. Crosswind, I'm thinking, just because it's close.
Great.
I can't afford... I can't afford a D-10.
Yeah, it's not, who can? What is it, Charlie?
The bathroom.
Three?
Three. Three minutes.
Oh, wait, this is... Oh, okay. I bet you're good. Down there, the world. Maybe like this, like this.